So we're looking forward to this. And at this time, I'm going to ask that we come to order and we will stand for our invitation and for our flagrant. To the maker of the heavens and the earth and the universe, we thank you for this great opportunity here today. We thank you for another day to be of service to all those who are coming in contact with us and those who we will affect. We welcome you into this meeting today that you may have your way, that you will lead us and guide us with your wisdom and your knowledge, that we will make the best decision for the whole of this great city of Florence, so that Florence can shine among the neighboring cities and counties throughout the nation. We welcome you into this meeting this day to have your way. Amen.
Amen.
And we have, of course, this time, minutes, a monthly meeting from New Graham denied 2020. Do you have a second? Is properly motioned second? Are there any questions? Here are no questions. All those in favors, please say aye. Any opposed, nay. Let it show that the minutes have been adopted unanimously. Next, we have on our agenda, the election of our mayor pro temp.
Mayor, I would like to make a nomination.
Before we enter into a nomination, I wanted to start a reach out for everyone, so there will be from me with the fact that last month, we had our general election. From that general election, the previous council voted to defer the election of our mayor pro temp due to the fact that we'll be changing and having new members come aboard. So we are here now, we stand, first time normally in history that we have five council members. But also, we do not have a representative from District One or from District Three. So in looking at this, it is my hope that our council, if there's no objections, that we would elect our mayor pro temp to serve from December to our April meeting, at which time we will have two elective officials from District One and District Three. They're having our full complement of our board, giving all of our city the opportunity to have a vote, vote cast while mayor pro temp. So if there's no objection, I would like that we are proceeding our nomination for our mayor pro temp to serve from April, from December of 2020 to April of 2021.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Point of order, and I would call on our city attorney to, with reference to the statute, because I believe that ordinance does not allow for that. My understanding from the ordinance is it specifies the term in the ordinance and we are taking action pursuant to the ordinance. That's implied. Mr. Peterson, have you got that available to you?
The chair recognizes Attorney Peterson, our seat attorney.
And I believe we're referring to Section 2-23. Is that correct?
It is Section 2-23. And to give a proper answer to it, I think I need to reference a couple of things. Section 5-7-190 of the state code of laws says that it is our job as council members to elect mayor pro temp. And in the state statute, it says for a term of not more than two years. Our council in the past, past and ordinance, there's Section 2-23, that the operative part of the ordinance says the council shall, at the first meeting of the newly constituted council after any general election for city council, elect one of its members as mayor pro temp for a term of two years. So our council in the past, and this was before my time, I don't know the total history of it, chose to go ahead and specify a term of two years, so that I guess thought was that with a newly constituted council, we know the next set of elections of council would generally be two years down the road. So they didn't want to have a situation where, you know, you had multiple terms for mayor pro temp within that area. This, obviously, we can read that code section two different ways. The first way is the one that Councilman Jubilee is referring to. And that is, there really isn't any wiggle room that says you shall elect mayor pro temp for a term of two years. And on the surface, that certainly is a very obvious and certainly could be a correct reading of that. It does have language in here that says at the first meeting of the newly constituted council after any general elect. We've got an unusual situation right now. Do we have a newly constituted council after any general election? We sure did. So am I saying that I think we could put off election of mayor pro temp? No, I don't think so. I think we have to elect the mayor pro temp. The question in my mind is whether that language means that, of course, in the coming year, we've got two vacancies that will be filled by having primary election and then a general election to fill those two seats. I do think this could be read to mean that that means that in April, we're going to have a general election, or March 30th, we're going to have a general election that creates a quote newly constituted council. Can I sit here and tell you that I am absolutely confident in either of those readings? The answer is no, I can't. Against that last reading that I just suggested we could do, it could create something unusual. It says after any general election, we elect for a term of two years. Well, none of us think that if we did it in April, that it would be for two full years to where now we go through the next election cycle and then don't let mayor pro temp again for another five or six months. The long and short of it is, I think we do have an unusual situation. Do I think it would be unlawful for council to say, given this unusual situation, we think we ought to do it this way? I don't think that would be unlawful. I think we all recognize we've got a bit of an unusual situation. I can't talk history-wise. I can say I've been the city attorney since 1994, which is longer than I care to think of. And I've never seen a situation like we have now, where we have two vacancies on council. But I know that's not a direct answer. I certainly understand the reading that Councilman Jubilee is giving. It's hard to get around the very direct language. It says, "Council shall elect one of its members as mayor pro temp for a term of two years." So that's pretty direct, Mike. Mr. Peterson?
Thank you.
Going down that road with you a second, on the alternative approach. It's my understanding that that would lead to another newly constituted council. Anytime any member of council were to either resign or whatever, and then that same issue would come up again and again over a course of that two-year period of time, you could have a repeating of that same issue on multiple levels.
You certainly could.
And as has happened in the past, if you think back historically, anytime there's been a member that has left, whether it's taking another position somewhere else, there's never been in the past a revote on a mayor pro temp. That has never happened in the past. Every time in the past that we've had an election of a mayor pro temp, that mayor pro temp has served a period of two years.
I think, I think that is correct, and that does point out, I mean, obviously, God forbid council members get ill or something happens, or they accept a job somewhere that requires a resignation. You know, my guess is that it was the fault of council when they passed this ordinance that after a general election in the fall, I think the reason they said two years was that's when the next general election would come around, or council.
Now, having said that, what I do think would be appropriate is whomever is elected as mayor pro temp now, to, when the two new council members come on, to have a consultation to see, do they want to see a new vote, or do they have any issues, or are they comfortable with the person that's elected? So I do think that's appropriate to have at that time in April. But the clear reading of the statute now says two years, historical precedent, it's never been for less than two years. And you have a situation, if we were to change that now, where for the first time ever, we could be having multiple elections for mayor pro temp on an ongoing basis, depending upon council members coming or going. And that has never happened in the history of the city of Florence.
I'm certainly not aware of that ever happening, and I certainly think that's a very straightforward reading of.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are back now from our brief intermission.
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to continue where I was.
One second. This is bad, that you just moved out a lot of kinks at first one.
Technical difficulties.
Okay.
Mayor, you might, once we get back live, you might want to let them know, because they might not know that we went off because of power loss. You might want to say something, so they understand what happened.
Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. As you will see, we experienced a short intermission. We did have some power issues, but we are back on, and yes, all our bills were played, so it's just some act of nature. We just heard from our seat attorney, Mr. Jim Peterson. Mr. Peterson, do that conclude your presentation?
I was asking questions.
I had concluded my comments, but certainly be glad to take any questions.
Excellent. Councilman Jubilee, do you have any questions?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. So where we went over the statute regarding, and the history as well, regarding the two-year term. But I do understand fully the mayor's concern about there being, and that's a practical matter as opposed to a legal matter. The practical matter being that there's two council members who are not here on council now, who will be coming, and that is an unusual situation, particularly at the beginning of a new term for council. So what, while I don't think it's legal to put into a motion that it be for a specific limited term, I do think we can have an understanding that whomever is elected mayor pro temp will consult with and have, and have assurances from the two new council members that whether or not they would like to have a revote or not, and then address it at that time. And I think if that's something that either of the new council members that join us feel like is, would be appropriate, then it can be redone at that time. For the other, the same token, if they're comfortable with the decision that's been made, then it won't be necessary. So I do think on a practical matter, it can be handled. But legally, I think we are, and precedent ones, I think we have to stick to the way the statute is written. So that's my understanding of the best way for us to proceed.
Are there any others, whether discussion among the council members, any question for our seat attorney? If not, thank you, Mr. Peterson. It's my understanding that we do have callers online who would like to express some their thoughts and references to the mayor pro temp. So at this time, we prepare to recognize public appearances. At this time, we prepare to have Mr. Brian Braddock, who will be coming on to speak and reference to the mayor pro temp.
Hello. Well, first of all, I want to congratulate you, Mrs. Mayor. We haven't had a chance to see each other personally, but I guess this is about as close as you can get with COVID nowadays. And, and also, you stated, you know, we got some historical precedents in this situation where two districts aren't represented. So, you know, just one more thing that 2020 is throwing at us. But I do appreciate you allowing me to speak. I'm coming to speak on behalf of the constituents of District Three, of which I am, you know, one of, and a candidate for that county, for that city council seat. I do like what you initially presented, but understand the different things that go along with that. I've been out, so I don't know if y'all have continued that discussion. But the biggest thing is that I wanted to make sure that the citizens of District Three and District One would have a voice in determining the mayor pro temp since it has such an impact on the whole city in the event that your absence, you know, for any period of time. So whatever we can do to make that a possibility in April, when, after the general election is taken, to fill those two seats, is what I actually, as a citizen of Florence in that district, want to see be made possible.
Thank you, Mr. Braddock. Does that conclude your discussion?
Well, I don't know, did I miss anything in the interim while we were knocked offline? The last that I heard was Councilman Jubilee discussing the issue with having to vote each time a city council person may come off of office and back on. Was there any more discussion after that?
No, you did not miss anything. Once we went off air, we see, so when you came back in, that was the only other discussion. There's been no other discussion.
But Madam Mayor, I don't know, Brian, if you were, heard the comments when we came back on. I don't know if you were able to hear the comments back. A, an approach that I had suggested is, as opposed to the legal framing that we, I think we are limited to, which is that it be for a two-year period of time. As a practical matter, what I had suggested is that whomever is elected mayor pro temp, consult with the new members of council, and if necessary, a revote can be held at that time if, if that is what is determined by either of the council members to be what needs to take place. So it was addressing it on a practical matter, because I think we are, we have a limitations as the ordinance is written. And so that, I don't know if you heard that piece or not.
I didn't. How, how would that be initiated? Let's say, you know, you know, the two new city council people, after they're elected, prior to the, or during the April city council meeting, would that be initiated by them in term? You know, what would be the process to initiate a new vote? Is there any kind of precedent for that? If there was, if there was calls to do that?
There is, there's no precedent for that to be done. Basically, what we're looking at right now, if we do not have an individual who come aboard as mayor pro temp and elect to step down in April, that would allow a new vote, but that would be totally up to that individual. There's no precedent that will call for that person to step down and then allow a new election. So no, there's no precedent for that. So that is why I interjected that, but there was objection, so objection to it. So when we proceed, we will proceed to elect a mayor pro temp who will serve. And then if that mayor pro temp so chooses to have a new election or step down, that is what would occur, otherwise, no. The election today, based on what we're proceeding, there will be this five-member board who will actually vote. And the ones who come aboard for one and three in April, there will be no vote for them.
So they would, they would actually have to remove themselves from the seat in order to create a void which would initiate a new vote?
Correct. That person would have to create that void. We would not, as, as a council, we would not do that. We, once we, if we abide with that quote-unquote primary first league interpretation, that individual will be elected to a two-year term. And they will be able to serve, and there will be, this will not be brought back up again. Not yet. That person who is elected chooses to step down, step down, he could. And I will get Attorney Peterson, is that not correct interpretation from what we heard today?
Yeah. I, I do think that's correct. If we elect a pro temp for a two-year term, obviously, it's then, and what I hear Councilman Jubilee suggesting is that perhaps as we go through this election process, the folks being considered for election could either commit that, yes, when the new person, new people come on, if they have an interest in us redoing this election, then we will consider that at that time. And when, when I say step down, I don't mean that that person would be asked to, or that person would decide, yeah, I'm stepping down and I don't want to be mayor pro temp. They may well say, I'm going to resign the position. I'd still like to be mayor pro temp, but now that we have two council, two new council members, I'd like for us to have the opportunity to revote. But as you stated, I think that would be a decision for the person elected. And I think what Councilman Jubilee is referencing is, is it recognizing that this is an unusual situation? That there may well be willingness on the part of whoever is elected to do that.
And that's exactly my.
No, still questioning for clarification. Now, so when we're let, we're let for that two-year term, when it comes to April, if the individual who's elected, if they communicate with a new council member, they can voluntarily resign from the position, which is a position of them themselves, they can be nominated again for along with either the new council persons want to be nominated, they can't. So that would be our procedure. That person would be elected today. They will be the mayor pro temp. And if valuations in April with the individual and the new members, if they so choose, that new elected pro temp can thereby choose to resign, thereby.
For the purpose of allowing those two to participate in a new election on the mayor.
But it would have to be a volunteer position of resignation, correct? They have the volunteer to resign.
That is correct.
Councilman Jubilee, do you have a statement?
I was just wanting to make clear what I, my position from earlier, which is I think it would be beneficial for, to be able to have an understanding on the front end that whomever is elected, go forward and consult with those new council members when they come on. And if it's, if it's something that needs to be done at that time, absolutely, it should be done at that time. So I think that on a practical side, I think is a way to handle it, to address the concerns that you raised and have been raised before, raised by Mr. Braddock. But I think the legally, I think we're kind of trying to on that. That's, I think, a way to handle it in a comprehensive way.
Mr. Braddock, does that conclude your questions or concerns at this time?
Yes, Ms. Mayor. I would, I would only like to say that it would be nice to whomever is elected today would go on record to say that they would be willing to do that in April so that the, the other two districts and the constituents that they represent would, would have an opportunity to add their voice to the determination of mayor pro temp going forward from, from April.
Thank you, Mr. Braddock.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next, I do believe we have another citizen who desires to speak. At this, at this time, we will have Mr. William Schofield, who will be joining us on audio and reference to the mayor pro temp. He's ready. We have Mr. William Schofield on audio at this time. We see Mr. Schofield, but we cannot hear him audibly at this time, so give us a few moments, please. Mr. Schofield, we cannot hear you. We can see you, but we cannot, we can't hear you. I believe he's signaling to us he's going to call in. You can call us. Okay. Mr. Schofield is going to speak. He's going to call us in on the landline, so please be patient with us. I thought we were going to have some news now. Mr. Schofield?
Ms. Mayor, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Welcome.
Thank you. Sorry for the little technical difficulties. I hope you and council are having a great day.
We are. This is the, this is the state of the audio on Zoom and online, so we're getting used to our new transition throughout the nation. You're welcome today. I want to hear your thoughts today on that of the topic of mayor pro temp.
Yes, ma'am. So I've been catching up since we had the little power outage. Mr. Braddock stated majority of my concerns. I do like your idea of basically an interim mayor pro temp pro. I do not feel, though, that we do have a constituted council. I do believe we have to refer back to Section 2-20 that actually defines what a council is, and that's seven members, one of whom shall be the mayor. It puts us in an unprecedented place. There we are today with only five members and two of the three districts not being represented. Just saying that, whatever you guys do today, I feel that you'll be doing what's best in your heart for our city and our citizens. I do ask that you take into heavy consideration the districts, the districts one and three. As I believe Councilman Jubilee has stated that, that that person could, in his, in his form, step down. But like Brian, Brian Braddock said, that we would then need some kind of record stating that that person would be willing to step down if districts one and three's representatives did not agree with the decision. I don't know what y'all's feelings are on that about having it put on record, but. I, I don't know what y'all's feelings are on that about having it put on record, but um, it's just with a heavy heart that I just don't feel that we have a, a constituted council of all seven members. What, 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 what do you, what do y'all think? I mean, I haven't been able to catch every bit of it. I've had to back up and rewind some of it to, to fill in the loopholes of what I've missed from y'all talking, but.
Um, basically, Mr. Schofield, were you able to hear just now when I was speaking to myself and also Councilman Jabeley to uh see the attorney in reference to the options of what will occur? If you heard that, that was synapsis, a summary of what was discussed when we spoke with Mr. Braddock. And everything you said is correct. When it comes to the April meeting, which we're led today, the individual who is elected will have that option to willingly resign, which will therefore open the position up. With that person who resigns can be renominated, but others can be nominated as well and then vote upon that mayor pro temp. But that would be based on the fact we will elect the mayor pro temp today. When we elect that mayor pro temp, that will be the mayor pro temp. And after the March meeting, our election, when we come to April, if the individual so chooses to, that individual can resign and open the floor back up for nominations. But that individual who steps down will have the option of being renominated. And that is where we're at, and that's where we're at this morning.
Yeah, I, I just don't know how, I mean, without it being in record, how someone's, we're going to have to be able to take that someone's going to be willing to step down when the two new districts are finally represented again in April. Um, without someone going on record, I still don't feel that the two districts are going to be represented in that.
Thank you. We recognize Councilman McCall.
Mr. Schofield, what's going on, man?
Afternoon, sir.
Got you. What's your position on you having three at-large members who, home, voters of district one and district three um had the opportunity to vote? Or do you feel as if the voters of district one and district three um who, who elected us to serve at large? Do you think their voices would not be heard um from their at-large members? Um, if we were to vote today um on this, we would vote today and not ask for the council member to uh vacate the seat, excuse me, mayor pro temp to vacate the seat um coming. What's your position on that?
I spoke with this with a few other people over the weekend. The at-large seats are simply that. They cover the city as a whole. And the district seats represent solely that district. That's that district's voice. Whereas the other is every single district and every single citizen in, in, inside of the city. Without having districts one and three full. And I, and I, I know that's a, a bit of a word play with stating, you know, that an at-large seat covers the entire city. It's, it's a tough way to define that. Um, but I still would feel like the district ones was not represented in a way as in the fact that, or district three, that everyone in the city is able to elect the at-large seats. Where only district one and district three constituents are able to elect those seats, if that makes any sense.
I got you. So the precedent that we're going to set here is that every time there is a, a empty seat on the city council meeting, we should, regardless if there's at-large members or not, every time there's a vacant seat, we should always have the mayor pro temp resign into the, the full council. Is that, is that your position on how the council should move forward?
No. How, what I'm suggesting is that we wait until we have those two districts represented because of the fact that the mayor pro temp pro has not been elected yet. After the mayor pro temp has been, been elected, if there is a vacancy in any of the other seats, it, it's irregardless. We've already got a mayor pro temp pro elected for that two-year term. And that, that is, his term has not expired until those two years. Then, if we were in this position again, we would have to do this all over again. But if we were not, then we wouldn't have to do it again.
And like last thing, is your, is it your position that the mayor pro temp should be the longest-serving person regardless of the, regardless of who's on council, regardless of if it's uh members of a particular district or not, there or not? And is your position that it should still be the longest person on council?
You know, I thought about that over the weekend myself more in depth. And, you know, it hasn't always been that, but it's been that in the past and sometimes. But um, I think that would have to be taken under heavy consideration to, to, to figure out exactly who the, each councilman will want to elect to that position. But um, being only a constituent, I don't have that vote in that manner at this time, but.
At this time, the chair recognizes Councilwoman, can't get no more.
Okay, as I sit here and I listen to each person about districts and at-large, I was elected to district two, but in my heart, I serve all of Florence. I have to worry about every single individual and area in Florence. I can't sit here and just worry about district two, because then I'm not a public servant. A public servant has to do the whole. Even if you elected to the district, I feel that you should have the whole in your hands. And we vote on here, we're not voting just about district. We are voting for all of Florence, all the citizens of Florence, all the different areas in the city of Florence. So we need to get out of the habit of, I represent this and I represent that and I represent, we need to think about the whole, because that's the only way we're going to move Florence forward together is through the whole, not some, not this district over here, this district over here, or at-large. And I'm really getting tired of hearing about this district, that district. Let's think about the whole. Let's think about everybody. We're all, we're in it for everybody, not just for some people.
Yes, any other?
Oh, I, I, I agree with you one hundred percent. In order to move forward, we all have to move forward together. Every district is, is equally as important as the other, and we all have to move together.
At this time, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Barnes.
I agree with um Councilman, and while I agree with what was said so far, um, I do believe that precedence has, has already been set. And even though we are in unprecedented times, we still have to govern ourselves and move forward as the people have elected us to do a job. And there will be times when we have deficiencies. There will be times when people are not in place. But we still have to govern ourselves accordingly. I, I think when we get in, we, we get ourselves into a mess when we start thinking, taking opinions of, I, we should do this, the, the ordinance or the, the bill or whatever has, has already been stated. The rules have already been stated of what we should do. I do agree though, if the person who is elected, just so that we could have a consensus of the entire um council would step down and, and, and agree to do that so that it could just bring us together. I do agree that that would be a good thing, but I do think that we need to go on and handle this business and at hand and move forward. Um, I'm hoping that the person who is elected would say they would step down um to give the other two the opportunity.
Thank you, Councilwoman Barnes. To Mr. Schofield, do you have any other thoughts that you want to share with us today?
No, ma'am. Um, uh, uh, Ms. Athonia stumped it up perfectly. And, and that's basically where I stand is that I wish we would please give uh the new council members a voice when they do come on that. I hope y'all have a wonderful day.
Thank you. That concludes our public input. And at this time, we can get ready to proceed to our election for our mayor pro temps to be precluded with nomination, but also to interject to this, that we'll be aware, this is the first time that we're in this position. But more importantly, this is the first time we have a mayor pro temp who actually was elected to another body thereby creating this newly opened um, um, position. So at this time, the floor will be open for nomination for our mayor pro temp.
Madam Mayor, I would like, um, following precedents, precedence of um electing the senior-most um council member. I would like to nominate George DeBailey as mayor approaching.
Any other nominations? And at this time.
Oh, I'd like to nominate that uh, Chairwoman, so that they will choose the Councilwoman, um, Pat Gibson-Haymore.
We have two nominees. Councilman George DeBailey and Councilwoman Pat Gibson-Haymore. If there's no more nominations, I move that we close the nominations and we will proceed to a voting. Our first nominee.
May I say something first?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I've been nominated for mayor pro temp, and I, I thank you. And I will accept it if I'm elected. But I will tell you this now, I would be willing to step down after the general election and at the next city council meeting in April, that we would elect someone else. And actually, I wouldn't even want to accept the nomination. Whoever's elected at that time, whoever's chosen, that's who the mayor pro temp should be. I would just be interim for that short period if I'm elected today.
So at this time, we will move forward. We have nominee, Councilman George DeBailey. All those in favor, please say.
Before we, before we get down, I want to make sure I'm unequivocal in what I'm doing here. Now, I, I want to be clear, and I think this is probably the longest mayor pro temp vote the city of Florence has ever seen. Is that right, buddy? But I want to be unequivocal what we should do. I think moving forward all the way through and here on out to moving the city forward with unity is making sure that we establish precedent here. Precedent is very important in moving forward in a collaborative way. So politics should not be involved in who should be the next mayor pro temp. But I want to be unequivocal um in what I'm asking. The next person who's going to be the mayor, so the next mayor pro temp should step down and allow members of voters districts one and three to have a voice. And I wanted to be unequivocal on the record that you're going to resign. Madam Pat Gibson-Haymore said that she um is willing to step down. I want to vote for the longest-serving person, but I want it unequivocal on the record that in the interim, that if you will step down um in the interim and allow voters of district one and three to have a voice.
At this point, I do want to, I will call this discussion, we're, we have exited phase of discussion. We cannot, we cannot base the power we are electing the mayor pro temp. We are electing a mayor pro temp regardless of whether that pro temp steps down or not. We are letting based on the fact that we stated that we will proceed to elect a mayor pro temp. So at this time, we have two nominees for mayor pro temp.
Madam, Madam Mayor, this is a discussion, this is a discussion phase, and I'd like to have a comment.
You can have a comment, but just we realize we're not in a motion phase, we are nominees. And so go ahead, and then after that, we will proceed to election.
Yes, thank you. To specifically a follow-up on the conversation that I had with Mr. Peterson, as well as has been addressed by Councilwoman Gibson-Haymore. I fully, and as I had indicated earlier, I also endorse this uh position of allowing uh members of county, district one and three to participate and to directly respond to the question. I have absolutely, like Councilwoman Gibson-Haymore, um, I would, I have no problem whatsoever with uh resigning of the position and coming back on. Now, I will say that um, you know, I would uh be honored if that were to be a position that I were to be uh nominated and elected to for the entirety of the two-year term. Um, I certainly would, but um, I fully understand as the issue that was raised initially by Madam Mayor and then followed up by the two uh members who spoke to us of, while the, there are four members. Actually, the mayor also represents the entire city as well. There are four of us up here who represent the entire city. Those specific districts are not currently represented with council members. And so I embrace your um point that you raised, Councilman Call, as well as um Councilwoman Gibson-Haymore. And I, I would agree this, the equally to do the same thing for the betterment of trying to build unity within the entire uh body.
Well, I've got a question. Well, before we proceed, we're, we're presently in a phase of nomination. We had, we had, I stated as prior to entering this, that if we were going to elect, we elect on the basis that that individual will serve from December to April. That is exactly what was stated, and if there was no objection, there was no objection. So now I'm hearing something that we cannot be based on what we are voting. We cannot be legally bound to make that individual step down. Please hear me, council. If you're going to look at legality, this is legality. That when it comes to, we elect the mayor pro temp today, this is our mayor pro temp. Comes April meeting, we will have a new council member aboard. This board and that council member's on the, on the lead, no legal precedent based on what you're saying you want to do today. For that person to have to say that now. We are electing a mayor pro temp based on what we're saying right now for two years' term. So at this time, we have two nominees. Councilman George Bailey, Councilwoman Pat Gibson-Haymore. At this time, I will call for the vote, we have uh Councilman George Bailey. So we'll be clear, please say aye and give me a sure hand, those who are voting for Councilman DeBailey.
There's no discussion phase on this election, unfortunately.
We, we've done discussion, we're into actually nomination now. So our discussion was when we first, when I gave that motion, we were discussing then. So now we're going to redoing our nominees. So we have presented our nominee. So now we need to vote on our nominees. Correct me if I'm being in error. That's, so we need to vote now. Then we need to vote. Is all those in favor of Councilman DeBailey? Please show your hands and give me aye. So we have a total of three hands for DeBailey. So at this time, the nomination is concluded. Thank you, Councilwoman, for offering self, self. And it thereby passes that uh Councilman George Bailey has been elected to serve as mayor pro temp.
Thank you. And thank you, ma'am. May I have a comment, please? And I fully appreciate all members of council, as well as the community at large, wanting to have full input into all the decisions of council and this position as well. And I will follow through with this come April, uh at the April meeting, and we will handle it accordingly at that time. So uh, thank you for the vote of confidence in the election, and I look forward to working with you as we go forward um from here.
All right. And at this time, we will have the force of parents before council. We have, you know, on as a electoral official, Frank J. Buddy, Brandon's second councilman. From Florence County, he was his buddy.
Thank you, Mayor. George, Pat, I'm not worried, I've got y'all friends. Be as well be one day, Councilman. Glad to be here today. Um, I was almost a volunteer to be mayor pro temp for another month until y'all. I chose not to say anything. No, I'm here. Pat, you about said everything that I wanted to say. I'm here, number one, I don't really recall any Florence County council ever coming before us while I was fifteen years on this group. You will see me more than you want to probably. I am here to, first of all, agree with Florence County council, number one. Number two, to challenge this group, plus the other two that will be coming along, to work with county, to make for a much better working team. We've got to do it, because the forces that we're in, we're competing. And I'm not telling y'all really anything you ne- did not know, but you need to be reminded especially particularly the two new council members, and, and I know you probably don't need to be reminded of it. But this is not a uh lecture. This is a challenge for y'all. We have got to work together, because on, I'm coming to you from the county as well as economic development. We're competing against Charleston, we're competing against Greenville, Columbia, and then the rest of the southeast. The thing is, we've got workforce here to compete against these people. We have low cost. We have low cost housing, we have plenty of people that want to work and that can work, that can be framed. And at Francis Marion or at Florence Orange and Tech, we need to use those great facilities, okay? Um, this whole, what y'all are doing is bigger than Florence. And don't let anybody fool you, Florence drives this town, I know that, that's one reason I ran for county capital, because we got to work together. And that was happening, it kind of faltered, but we need to get it back on track, on the train track to get it moving. We've got to work together, we're challenged to work together, but we're not working together just for Florence City, Florence County. We're working together for, for the people, and we got to, if we don't, we'll be behind the eight ball in every fashion we can. And by that, what I mean is we've got to work for all parts of Florence, not just downtown, not just Magnolia Mall, but everywhere. Pat has got the right idea, we're not district one, two, and three, we're at large, we're with everything. And people go, well, this is the city, this is the county, but hit with that, we're one region, this is really, really important. Um, and the sooner we all understand the better. And I will tell you and charge you that I will do everything I can to work with Madam Mayor. Mister Pro Temp and all of y'all, I don't care what district you're in, what I care about is we got to work together. And if we work together, we can make for a great community and things could really go, we're not always going to agree. And I will tell you, the first meeting that I attended, that I actually had a voice in, uh, I asked that we reestablish. The city county conference committee. Um, it's going to be reestablished in January. So I would urge y'all to be thinking about who you want on that committee, I will. Well, I don't know that I'll be on it, but my guess is that I will, along with another councilman. And, um, and, and that's, that's a really important committee to get things done, we won't always agree. But I will tell you that if you have an issue with the county, if you come to me, it will be resolved. It may not be resolved in the way you want it to be, but it will be done correctly. And I'm all about the city of Florence and I'm all about the county of Florence, but I'm really all about the region of our, of our community. One last thing, I didn't really get a chance to say to this when I left. And I just want to tell you, young staff here, any of the, I'm telling you every single one, they're really good people. And there's not anybody I enjoyed working with more than these people right here. I thank you for your time and I appreciate it, thank you.
Obviously, Buddy, um, thank you for coming before us today and we, like I said, we've had many years of working together. And I know some believe that by you moving from the city to council, to the county council, there's a lot. I think no, that's simply extending our reach because we have a teamwork and history, I've enjoyed working with you and I've served on the joint. Committee between the city and council and the county, and I believe that that committee is important. I believe that it brings the leadership outside of the meetings that we can come together to be able to communicate the needs of both area. So I'm looking forward to that committee being established and we will have some appointees. Who will serve and I'm glad we're looking forward to continue because I've served on, so we're looking forward to that. Do you know about council members that have any? Our record council recommends, I recognize this council name call.
Thank you, but I, I would love for you to be on this, work with you on this council, uh, have a good country club Republican on the board, I love it. But I would, I would say, uh, you know, uh. Time and time again on the campaign, trying to me and Mrs. Dumbey Barnes, we, we talked about having a great end. It was Madam Mayor, having a great working relationship with the county council, having you on there. Um, I think it's definitely going to benefit us, because I think we all know what the city of Florence grows, the county of Florence grows, the PD goes, right? Um, so I'm looking forward to working with you on county council if, not saying I'm looking at anything, but I, you know, give you a call and we can see what we can do. But I'm particularly interested in having council continue to, um, work on the corridors. Uh, of this area, I think we're serious about, um, how the city looks moving forward. Um, I think those corridors, particularly, um, county council has most of the corridors coming in, I think. Continue to work on that, uh, that plan that the consultant laid out for us a few years ago, I think that's something that we can continue to. Uh, work on and move this county and city forward.
I think that is. Chair, common, county council, I want to call you county, I'm giving you a. You're Bailey, you're recognized.
I, uh, personally did this with Buddy already, but I would like to do it publicly to, uh, uh. Tell him thank you for the Christmas present that he gave the city of Florence. Uh, because we received an email December the third from, um. Our city manager saying that he was informed by county councilman Buddy Brand. That the following streets within the city limits will be paved using, using county council infrastructure funds. To the tune of one point two million dollars, and I will say, that's the biggest Christmas present I've ever been a part of. So Santa, thank you very much, and it's Baker Lane, Lafayette Circle, Wisteria Drive, Manchester Avenue. Maynard Avenue, Rockington Lane, Lingwood Drive, if any of y'all out there in TV land live on those streets. Be sure to send a big thank you to county councilman Buddy Brand.
Thank you, George, let me, let me not take credit for that, even though I appreciate it very much. That was money that, uh, James Scofield had not used, y'all, y'all all remember James, he was on city council at one time also. And he had not used our, any money, they actually give us money. He had this extra money and had not been used and so they said that the county manager commented, Buddy, you've got extra money, do you want to? Do you want to go ahead and use it or wait? And I said, well, how much is it? And of course, it's what George said. And I said, well, let's pick out the worst rates and we did. And I called Randy and so James Scofield, that's money that he had extra, so I. That, and, and it will continue to do those things as, as they come up and advance the calls, not, not stop the calls.
Yeah, well, chair recognizes.
Buddy, um, congratulations for one, even though I hate to see you not here anymore. But I am proud to say that now on county council, I have good working relationships with five of you. Um, Al Bradley, Wayman Muffet, Buddy Brand, Kent Cottle, and Willa Doherty, because Will and Kent and I served on the school board together. So we know each other quite well also, and your county administrator, Russell Smith, we have a good relationship also, so. It's all working out.
Look forward to it, man.
Any other speaking phone, well, I mean, everybody else.
I'm, I'm looking forward to, um, working with you, it's exciting to know that, you know, I've been campaigning my brother, my brother Al Bradley and. Um, Mumford, um, and now to have, have you as well, I will be contacting you today.
Thank you. And also at this time, we do have before the council community members. Um, community members to speak on the Black Lives Matter mural, and I believe that we should have them in queue. Okay, we have Ms. Martha Nance to speak on the Black Lives Matter mural. The chair recognizes Ms. Martha Nance, Ms. Martha Nance, do we have you in queue online?
Yes, ma'am, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can, welcome in today's meeting, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to express my concerns about the mural located on Barn Street. Um, in expressing these concerns, um, the efforts, struggle, and feelings of others are not being cast aside. First, a public road has been used for expression. Without the forethought that other groups or entities might desire to express their views or concerns on other public streets or roads. Has a precedent been set? Uh, are we, um, changing our rules and creating new ones? Second, markings on public roads are forgiving directions to drivers and pedestrians. While art is to be celebrated as well as all lives, art on roads can be distracting to both drivers and pedestrians. Presenting a safety hazard, which could result in harm to individuals and litigation against the city of Florence. And as an aside, before anyone decides to label me or call me names. Our personal similar concerns about marking public roads, i.e. Calhoun Jackson Avenue. To former Mayor Wakila's office about eight to ten years ago. Third, if the agreement to use non-permanent paint was ignored and the mural remains. Are we then telling our city, city citizens that they do not have to adhere to original super permanence? Fourth, is the lack of transparency prior to the actual painting of the mural. Was the proposal presented to the entire city council? Was it open to the community for discussion before or after being submitted to the city manager? Public roads are funded by all taxpayers and therefore all the representatives on city council should be consulted. And presented with proposals and all constituents given an opportunity for input. And finally, according to Indira Gandhi, you can't shake hands with a clenched fist. And I want to thank you very much, um, for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Nance, we appreciate you. Before us today, thank you.
Thank you. Proposal presented to the entire city council, was it open to the community for discussion before or after being?
Thank you, Ms. Nance, and we are preparing now to proceed on to our next appearances by Mr. Christopher McCray. To speak on the Black Lives Matter mural, Mr. Christopher McCray.
Thank you, can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir, thank you so much for coming before us today, we appreciate your appearance.
Uh, good afternoon to all council members, uh, and definitely to you, uh, Madam, uh, Mayor. Uh, I'm here today just to, uh, speak on behalf of the community and part of the, uh, action activist, uh, team and movement. That, uh, placed the mural, the art project on Barn Street, uh, not as its, uh, leading artists. Or organizer, but as an active community member who wants to see Florence move forward. Um, as it was presented, uh, to the group at this art project was indeed. Um, approved by a partnership of city council members, the city manager. And other members of the, uh, council board, uh, to include those who attended the event to, uh, include the project. And create the project on, uh, Barn Street. Uh, we followed all rules, regulations, and protocol when it comes to the, the proper materials, uh, used to. Uh, create the project, uh, we, we actually followed the timeline presented. Uh, by the, uh, council members and the city manager and assistant manager. Who ensured that we were in compliance with the rules and regulations of the city and, uh, county legislation. This project was presented to the city, uh, by the citizens. And for no reasons did we believe this, uh, project would be, uh, temporary based on the lifespan of the materials used. And again, those that were, uh, predetermined to be okay by the city. Uh, the project based upon time, energy, effort, and financial burden was set to be. An art fixture that would last, again, based on the life of the materials used. Uh, not to be removed aside from the natural wear caused from traffic, elemental weather and weather erosion. Uh, so we would like to present to the council to vote for its, uh, permanency. Uh, rather than its temporary approval, uh, by the council and would like to seek measures on how we have that done. Thank you.
Mr. McCray, thank you for your appearance here today, and we do have another speaker online. Let me verify.
Madam Mayor, we have Wally Cummings, we have his audio on, would you please tell him turns audio?
We have on the line, Mr. Wiley Cummings, Mr. Cummings, would you please turn your audio online? Mr. Wiley Cummings, please turn on your audio.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can, thank you for coming before the board on this day. The floor is yours.
All right. So, uh, uh, reading a little statement here that are prepared and. Well, I'm Wally, uh, Cummings. And, uh, I speak on behalf of the entirety of the organizers, participants. Um, and community members that were involved in, um, the work of. Uh, putting down the, the piece of art. Well, we, the organizers of the Black Lives Matter mural designed by, uh, Florence native Mel Howard. Uh, located on Barn Street downtown Florence are present to defend our position against any remorse. Of artwork. Um, that was expressly and explicitly, uh, initiated in the spirit of collaboration. To confirm and or reaffirm that the actual black lives of black people. Does indeed matter. Um, the collaborative art project, uh, has brought together. Artists from the city of Florence, the PD and the southeastern region. Uh, community organizers, local and state politicians, citizens of the. Of, uh, the city of Florence, both young and old, blacks and whites to elevate the plight of. The least of us to a level of understanding and reciprocity. Um, we stand against any effort to rem- to remove this mural. Other than, of course, the natural course of where due to overpassing traffic. As it was fore- aforementioned, weather and, um, natural, other natural elemental erosion. We do acknowledge. Uh, the acidic desire to, as I understand it, put down a speed bump or speed bumps on the street. We acknowledge that while at the same time, um, advocate for the mural to remain as it is. Speed, speed bumps are not, and, uh, dare I say, should not be an impediment to the mural. And because the mural is in and of itself, in fact, not. An impediment to, to the desire to put down a speed bump. Uh, as citizens, constituents, and voters, we too are desirous of equity. In this matter and many more, but in this matter too. So in, in light of that, after listening and hearing, um. Um, and concern, I should say, we realized that with the historic election of you, Madam Mayor. And, um, super excited and happy and thankful and everything else about that. Um, as the mayor of the city of Florence, the city's full council is not yet in place. And we understand that there's a special election currently taking place to fill those two remaining. Uh, seats on the city council and in light of its. Current configuration, we are petitioning the council for, um, first, I want to say thank you for hearing us. Uh, and additionally, I want to, uh. Use a legal term, ask for continuums. Um, until the full council is in place and, uh, not presuming that. Um, I'm not assuming that it goes without saying, I do want to s- say here that. We are explicitly and expressly saying that the mural should at least remain intact and in place until. The wisdom of the full council is in place and with that. Uh, I just simply want to say thank you for your time and consideration, uh, regarding this matter.
Mister Cummings.
Yes.
Please correct me, are you not the originator of the original email that was addressed to have the new place at site? Plus, very time period, temporary that was, would wash away within three to five natural phases of rain? Is that not the? Is that not the sentiments that was expressed in your conversation and also writings to the city? Correct me if I'm wrong. Is that not how it was presented?
Well, in the writings to the city, and I can give you the exact language in that way. It's, no, should not be any confusion about that.
While you're looking for that, I would like to ask the city manager, do we have that letter available?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cummings, the city manager has that information, so I'll get 100% that for, so.
Very good.
Thank you for looking for that.
It's a two-page multiple request. So, I believe that there you're referring to, Mayor, is the fact that it stated that materials used to complete projects are biodegradable and are not meant to be a permanent fixture. If you recall, after we had a discussion with you, and asked, what does that mean, not a permanent? And your answer back to me was, it should be temporary and wash away after third or rain, normal rain events.
Wait, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Real quick, are you-
Cummings, could you please address also, I think there's another statement on your back, in temporary toward the top part of that?
That's what it says. It says, "Materials are being, materials used to complete projects are biodegradable and are not meant to be a permanent fixture."
That's correct.
And there's another statement here, I think, as expressly stated, that was to be temporary, correct?
Other than the not meant to be permanent, ma'am, I don't-
That's correct.
I will say an additional statement.
So, stated not to be permanent?
Not meant to be a permanent fixture.
Yes.
Because initially, initially, we, because of the materials used, not, because of the materials, we knew that the artwork itself was not going to be a permanent fixture. That is to say that we knew that it is not going to be curated. There is not even a possibility for it to be curated because we understood that it was not permanent. And that with, I think the, this, I don't know if we want to call it disconnect or misunderstanding, or the lack of clarity, I would say here, is what is meant by temporary. Like, we knew that it was not going to be permanent because we were not going to curate it. Natural weather, we fully expected that the traffic would have its impact. Natural erosion of the material would occur. That's what we understood. No, we, there was never, at least, if, I do not recall a time where there was some very specific time where the mural, it would either dissolve or go away. We didn't know. We didn't think. We did not have any consideration towards chalk or some type material that would wash away like chalk. That was never a part of the discussion. We've, we met far too many times throughout this process for it to be misunderstood or misinterpreted on anybody's part. And if that was the case, then I think we all stand, I mean, I say all that, when I say all that, I mean, the participants, the organizers, the city, citizens of the city, and all of those artists who came together to put this project down in a spirit that was, that is expressly written in that same information that was read from earlier. It is in that spirit in which the entire project was even brought forth. It wasn't until, in what I would consider unfortunate way of dealing with the concerns or any concerns over the mural, that in itself just sparked what I would consider unnecessary, what I would consider just unnecessary. And that is why now, at this point, we are seeking whatever procedures or process that has to occur, needs to occur, to make the fixture permanent. But I don't want to jump ahead. What I would like is, if it's at all feasible, if it makes sense, if it's possible, to just simply wait until the full council is there, and then we will go with whatever is decided at that point in time.
And Mr. Cummings, thank you for your appearance today. And I do want to clarify that in our personal conversation that, when we spoke, one of the questions that I asked was about the temporary or the time period, and you did state to me that it will go away in three to five, you know, cycles of rainwater. So, if you did not remember that, I did not understand that was in your conversation, that you stated that it would be three to five rain cycles. And in the conversation as we proceeded with the city manager, as you heard, I will have to give, with the young lady who spoke before, if it was to be a permanent fixture, there was a procedure that would have had to be followed to get permitting. And on that behalf, that is why when you had those conversations along with the prior mayor, I believe that he expressed all these things from the city's standpoint of view, the reasons to you and the representative of why it was not to be permitted to be permanent based upon your legal writings and agreements that were set forth. So, if that was not comprehended prior to that, I apologize that you did not comprehend that. But that is why you did not go through that permitting procedure, which would have been required based upon the city standards for it to be a permanent location of thing. It was, you know, understood based on your writing as well, that it was to be temporary, not permanent. As stated, that you stated about the speed bumps. The speed bumps is a project that was favored in prior to this for the safety of the pedestrian and the children who utilize the Barn Street campus because of the high traffic flow when someone come through there in a high speed. So, I apologize in advance if you did not comprehend when it came to the terminology of what temporary did not, you know, mean. And I did not know, did the city manager have any other thing that you need to read into?
No.
Well, so, Mr. Cummings, thank you so much for speaking to us today. We appreciate you bringing forth the thoughts and suggestions. And if that concludes your comments for today, if so, we are moved to our next in the speaker of public appearance. You have a Louis Hopkins.
Ma'am, he comes up when we have a discussion about a result.
He had a deal.
Yes.
So, at this time, that concludes our public appearance for Black Lives Matter. But I do want to add to that, based on the desire of artists in our community, I have commissioned a cultural art team, a cultural art committee that will be working together with some business leaders as well as educational leaders here in the city, but would also include some of the artists who participated with the Black Lives Matter mural. So, I have commissioned that committee. They have already met for the first time, and they will be working on developing artwork that will be representative of our city citizens. And it will be an inclusive artwork that will speak for us all. And it's been commissioned, and we are leaving that to our citizens as they're working for it to direct us on how the community, which includes the Black Lives Matter mural participant artists, to move the city forward. But we will continue to move forward, and we will have our voices all united together to speak. So, thank you to all of our parents before boards, and I would like to thank in advance our cultural art committee, who will be working to lead us forward through this process in our artwork. And at this time, we will move on to, we have our next man is ordinance in position. And our first ordinance is bill number 2020-37, which is for a second reading, and is the ordinance to grant Florence County a permanent right of way easement on Darcon Street, the construction of a sidewalk. We have a motion in the second. Are there any questions? All are favorable. I, in a pose made. Therefore, I let the record reflect, and we have adopted bill number 2020-2020-37. Next on our ordinance and bills is bill number 2020-38 for a second reading, and ordinance to annex and zone two acres on Jody Road, identified as Florence County text map parcel 00123-01-152 and 00123-01-R/W and a portion of text map parcel 00123-01-005 and 00123-01-006. We have a motion. Do we have a second? It is a properly motion and second. Let the record reflect, and we have adopted bill number 2020-38. Oh, let me vote. Let me call forth any questions. All is a favorite. I, in a pose made. So, now, let the record reflect, and we have adopted bill number 2020-38. Next on our agenda, we have bill number 2020-39 for a second reading, and ordinance to- Our next bill is bill number 2020-39 for a second reading, and ordinance to annex and zone 3553 Texas Road, identified as Florence County text map parcel 00741-01-007 and 695 Ford Drive, identified as Florence County text map parcel 00741-00008. Do we have a motion? And I believe it's- So, is there a motion? Do we have a second? We have a motion in the second. Are there any questions? If there's no question, all those are bigs, I, in a pose made. Let it reflect that we have adopted bill number 2020-39. Next is bill number 2020-40 for a second reading, and ordinance to annex and zone 234 Shenandoah Lane, identified as Florence County text map parcel 90113-01-120. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
It is a properly motion and second. Are there any questions? All is a favorite. I, in a pose made. That you reflected in the record, we have adopted bill number 2020-40. Next, we have a force introduction of ordinance. We have reading of bill number 2020-41 for a first reading, and that stands as an ordinance to resolve from NC-15 to NC-10, a parcel located on Marion Avenue, identified as Florence County text map parcel 90067-03-014. Do we have a motion so that we can hear all this? Do we have a second?
Second.
Is that properly motion is second. We can hear now from Mr. Cummings.
Thank you, Mayor. I will share my screen here as well. This property, there we go. This property is located on Marion Avenue. It is also the second loop road at the end of Marion Avenue and a brush Jeffrey's Creek, of a closer picture of the property. You can see it's kind of a long, narrow parcel in Marion Avenue that was never subdivided. As it backs up to the creek, and there's a fair amount of flood plain on that side, and I'll get to that in a minute. It is currently zoned NC-15, which is a large lot, single-family residential. That requires 15,000 square foot lots and 100-foot lot widths. The proposed zoning is NC-10, which is medium-sized, single-family, detached lots. They can be a minimum of 10,000 square feet with 80-foot lot widths. So, it's still in the NC single-family district, but it is a bit smaller of a lot. The site is constrained by flood plain issue. And this is a site photo. You can see how the end of Marion Avenue terminates there. The left, it's like a panoramic view, but the left-hand side kind of tails off. That's where it drops off to the creek. And I'm going to review the flood plain in relation to the lot. In this image here, the darker blue area is what we call the flood width. And you can think of that as essentially the run of Jeffrey's Creek in a flood event. So, by our code and FEMA regulation, no development is allowed in that area whatsoever. So, no matter what subdivision is allowed to occur, or what zoning is allowed to occur or not allowed to occur, no development will occur in the dark blue area, nor will it occur 20 feet, including the light blue area. So, another 20 feet into this light blue area would also be required to be preserved, and that's through local ordinance and a repairing buffer requirement that is along Jeffrey's Creek. The light blue area is the 100-year flood plain. Development can occur in the light blue area. However, it would have to meet all flood plain development regulation. I mean, it would have to, you know, if anything's below the base flood elevation, you know, flood nets have to be installed in the foundations if it's in that area. Any living space, you know, finished floor elevations have to be one foot above the base flood elevation. So, it would have to meet certain requirements. And the kind of tan area there is the 500-year flood area, and that area is not regulated, but it is marked on the FEMA maps, but it is not regulated. And of course, everything else going south is out of that. And the proposal brought forward by the applicant, I did a little diagram here that shows what he's currently, you know, he's proposing to do by allowing the smaller lots. He would have two that are completely out of the flood plain, allowing for two homes to be out of it, with the third one, you know, would potentially be in it. As the way it currently exists, the applicant could subdivide it into two lots, you know, with one being outside of the flood plain completely, and the other would be partially in, partially out. So, the proposed zoning allows, you know, three lots to be potentially constructed upon, whereas the current zoning only allows two homes. So, there was a question last time about the sewer at that site as well. We did inspect that. The sewer is approximately seven foot in depth. It is available at this location. And the granting of, you know, the sewer doesn't put an excessive, you know, demand. It's a fairly negligible demand upon that site, that location. And this concludes, staff, for today.
And this time, it's time for discussion. I know there was a lot of discussion the last time, and several, the president council members brought up a lot of questions at this time. So, for the new council member, if you have- So for the new council member, if you have any questions or statements, you welcome to do that at this time. And at this time, I will recognize councilman Bailey. He has some at least a follow up thoughts in the last time as well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jerry, when we met for November meeting. We looked at this and questions about the difficulty of sewer. Just to make sure I'm clear, okay? If I hear you saying it correctly, parcel number three cannot be built on. There will be no. Construction that will take place on parcel number three. Is that, am I hearing that correct?
If if the proposed zoning goes through, parcel number three could indeed have a a house constructed on it. It it would just have to be within this tan or 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 light blue area. And it would have to meet all, you know, requirements of floodplain construction. It would have to be with the finished floor, the the living space built at least one foot above the base flood elevation. And anything below that would either have to be steel or it would have to have flood vents. But so that, you know, it would provide free flow into and out of the underside of the home. Or, you know, underneath in the crawl space.
And but none of the actual construction can take place in the area that's designated by Dartmouth.
That is correct.
So the question that came up last time dealt with the sewer and the issue. This is on, basically, this is on the south side of Jeffrey's Creek.
That's correct.
And so West Spirit is on the north side of Jeffrey's Creek. And so we have issues with the sewer. Problems being able to move the. The product, given the the rising of the water levels that occur. And so those homes on Jeff on on that back up to Jeffrey's Creek have difficulties with it. And so do I hear you correctly that a perk test or whatever has been done? And Mr. Hemingway, you can feel free to jump in if you'd like. With regard to parcels one, two, and three, that they are all equal in terms of the ability. For sewer to that won't be authorizing a construction. And then a year from now, they having to deal with it because it's not flowing. The sewers are not flowing. I mean, and that's the issue that's on the other side. And I just want to make sure we're not authorizing ourselves a problem that's going to come back before us a year from or two years.
That's the developing council. Yes, sir. As Jerry stated, we are working on this together. That's why Jerry was the fourth parcel. Somehow all of us coming together. The sewer, like I said, approximately seven feet in depth. So there's enough elevation. Based on the situation where the houses and the parcel would be situated too. It'd probably be more of an impact on a stormwater perspective based on elevation than from a sewer perspective, but probably into the future. To be serving those particular houses, those parcels.
So what about from the stormwater perspective?
Stormwater, based on the, we put the map back up, Jerry. The, I can see everything in blue. The dark blue, we're more than likely probably underwater completely in a major rain event. And everything in the light blue, that's going to be partially underwater. And then as you get up to the tan and no one, that would not have any significant water impact. But the third parcel would have some type of stormwater impact on that property, probably what the goal there.
So what? And and let's be clear, don't, I mean, I listen, I'm all for it. I think it's fine. Listen, let's, I mean, we want to put three new houses up on that street. That's great. But I don't want us to be approving something that now we're going to have to spend thousands of dollars on later to try to fix. Because we've got stormwater problems and sewer problems. And so I I just need to understand clearly that. If approved, you all feel like that's not going to be a problem. And that the city has looked it over carefully and you've signed off on it. Mr. Dudley, you signed off on it. You say it's not going to be a problem. That's what we as council need to know because we're not, you know, experienced. We don't have the expertise on it.
Correct. And let's say in the from a more from a stormwater perspective, they will be issued by doing the three parcel.
So can can we just do two authorize the the?
That is an option, Mr. Dudley of council. Yes, sir.
Well, so how would that happen, Mr. Dudley?
If the parcels are allowed to remain zoned NC fifteen. You could still easily get two parcels out of it and still allow for the development of of two homes.
Parcel one and parcel two.
Parcel one and parcel two.
I don't think that's the problem. I think our our concern is with parcel three.
That's correct. The the parcel lines would have to be because of the requirements. He can only get approximately a twelve thousand square foot lot with the configuration it is right now. So he would have to slide the lines down a little bit, but it's fully capable of of doing that with just flattening it a bit differently.
So should that mean, should that mean that it, you you need to readjust that and then bring it back to us? Or what?
Well, if it's allowed to remain zoned the way it currently is, NC fifteen. In order to get two parcels out of it, all the, it could be approved administratively. The applicant could just bring a new flat to us showing lots with minimum fifteen thousand square square feet on them. And city staff would be able to approve that. So essentially lots one and two would get just a little bit larger and and, you know, three would get a little bit smaller. That's all that would happen. Just the parcel lines would move.
At this time, Chair recognizes Chair City Councilwoman.
I don't want us to have that problem. That's stormwater problem. Because you know how we've had angry residents coming here before in the past? So why would we create a problem for ourselves? When we can just allow them to do one and two and just throw three in the river? Because that's where it's going to end up. If we have a hurricane or something, it's going to end up there anyway. And then everyone's going to be upset with us if we give our approval for it. So I think they need to go back to the drawing board and we need to defer this. And come back another time.
I just want to make it clear, if you only want to allow two lots. All you do is vote against the current zoning request. It doesn't need to come back. Now, one thing to understand is in our zoning law. We don't have anything in our zoning laws. I I hear what y'all saying. I think it's great to consider it. From a zoning standpoint, it is perfectly legal for you guys to accept the new zoning request. And it is a concern on that lot three that you were looking at. Because at least part of the home would be in a hundred year flood plain. Now, that's not a stormwater problem like we have on streets where streets flood and things. There are many houses, probably along West Spirit, where houses are currently built. In a hundred year flood plain. And certainly those people have to be aware of it, that the FEMA gets involved for you to get a loan. You've got to get flooding insurance. You have all of those issues. It's totally up to you guys. The main thing I want you to understand is, I think what you've got is, if you want to allow the rezone. You're allowing this developer to understand he's building a home. That at least is partially in a hundred year flood plain. And the problems that go along with that. Now, if we said, no, we're not going to zone anything to allow anybody to be in a hundred year flood plain. The beach wouldn't have a house. I mean, everything at the beach is in a hundred year flood plain for just about. But it's up to you guys, but if you want to say, no, we do not want to allow a lot to be created. Where the home could be in a hundred year flood plain. All you have to do is not approve the requested change. Because if you don't approve that requested change, you can only fit two lots in there. And that's going to end up with that. And then a second lot will probably still, my guess is he'd sell a lot. He doesn't want to keep the swamp. He's going to sell a lot that includes that hundred year flood plain and the back. The difference would be he could make it to where there would be enough room for the house to be built. Completely out of the hundred year flood plain. But you don't need to send it back unless you need more study on what he's proposing. If you want to deny the request, that's all you need to do is somebody. Or or just vote down. You've got a motion before you. If you voted that down, that would mean the zoning didn't change. It stays NC fifteen and therefore he can't fit with two lots in there.
The Chair recognizes Councilman Bailey.
So so thank you so much for that clarification. So the the options before us now are vote no on the zoning request, which means it would, it could be subdivided into two lots. Or vote yes, which means it could be subdivided into three lots. The third one being that one that was shown, which was in the hundred year flood plain. And the developer would have to then work with the owner. The prospective new owner to figure out how to handle that. My, and and I'm okay with that because I understand there's a number of homes throughout our city that are built in that same area. But my concern is to make sure that it's not going to come back to us as a problem. The third homeowner to buy that property, the third property is not going to then come back later and say, wait a minute. There's water. I'm having sewer problems. I'm having, you know, I'm having those issues. If if we have the confidence that the the stormwater and the sewer issues can be resolved. With the developer so that we're not going to hear about it later, that's fine. That's the question that I've got is. Do you all have the confidence that it can, that that third lot can be developed in such a way? That it's not going to be a problem for city council to have to deal with staff as well in the future? That's, do y'all have that confidence or do you not have that confidence? That's, that's my question. Maybe I worded it poorly earlier and if so, I apologize.
Yeah, I I apologize for any for not being clear as well. But, you know, from the intent of the floodplain ordinance itself. There's always the intent to try to prevent as much construction in the floodplain as possible. I mean, that's the overall intent of the the floodplain ordinance. And if development does occur, it has to meet certain guidelines to mitigate life loss and property loss. So that's the whole purpose of the floodplain regulation. And in doing that, I I think, and and, you know, Michael can speak to this as well. But, you know, with the unprecedented rainfall events that we've had over the past several years. It's been very difficult to predict predict where flooding would occur in the city. During the two thousand fifteen event, I saw areas within the city that were far above the five hundred year level. And others that didn't even hit the the one hundred year level. And then in the two thousand seventeen event, just the opposite, I saw areas in other parts of the city that went well above that. And and others, others below the, you know, that didn't even hit into the floodway area. So, you know, it's very localized. It's very unpredictable at times. So I I think it's very difficult to predict if we would have problems there.
Do do, does staff have a recommendation?
We, we, we stay fairly neutral on this, to be honest with you, you know, going through planning permission. However, I do believe the intent of the floodplain ordinance is to prevent development within the floodplain. And as well as the intent of the Jeffrey's Creek overlay was.
So you have a council.
This really good. So in other words, you're actually telling us not to do it. In other words, this whole thing, really, in reality, is a green thing. I have three lots and I want to sell three so I can get, make more money. I don't care what happens after that.
On the base, base, I would want to interject you based on, you know, guidelines for our staff is not to give. Opinion but to present the facts of what we have. And from what I'm hearing is that. These, the flood zone area at this time, we know based on what we have that when we look at them now, we have heavy flooding coming out in the first blue zone. Then a lot of blue, there's still a possibility that we knew already that we would have water coming into that area. We knew at this time, the builder can place two homes if we leave things as they are now and vote against your acceptance. Receive this, the builder still can build two homes there and not have that flood zone including in. So we have the options of either voting down this proposal and the builder still can build, correct, those two homes. And also while we're here, I do want to let this council know that we do have a caller who wants to speak to this matter. And if it's okay at this time, if the council completed their discussion. I would like to recognize our caller, Mr. Lou Hopkins, who will speak to this matter on this deal. Mr. Hopkins, are you on the phone?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, welcoming today's meeting and your, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mayor Councilman. I purchased this property about six months ago and at the time I went and spoke to the city about. Putting two, three single family lots on it and and building two or three single family homes. That that matched the neighborhood well. And I think today we're here so I can hopefully get the two lots that are, that have infrastructure. And a road in front of zoned to meet the neighborhood standards now. And possibly in the future, I'd like to come back and maybe see if we can get approval for a third lot. If I can get infrastructure to it at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. Do we have any questions or for Mr. Hopkins while he's on the line? Another conversation for Mr. Hopkins while he's on the line. If not, Mr. Hopkins, thank you so much for calling in today. We appreciate your conversation. Thank you.
Okay.
Do you have one as well?
Sorry about that, buddy. I was about to call you Clint, but I didn't. I did all the time. Mr. Dilly, based off the concerns I'm hearing from the the developer here, he's saying that he only wants to build on one and two. But if we approve this this ordinance for second reading. He'll be able to, and if it becomes an ordinance, he'll be able to then build on all three, right? Regardless, he might have to come at the council for this third one.
That, that is correct. If 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 the zoning moves forward, then he would not have to bring it back to council for approval on the third lot.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steph. At this time, we have a motion in a second. We had discussion, in a further discussion. Question? All those in favor of passing bill number twenty twenty dash forty one, please signify by saying aye. All those in opposed, twenty twenty forty one, may. All right, so at this time, bill number twenty twenty dash forty one has marked next. Now we are up for our reading for bill number twenty twenty dash forty two for first reading. This ordinance is an ordinance to annex and zone fifteen acres on West Sump Street and Piscopo Road. Identified as parcel of Florence County text map parcel zero 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 nine seven dash zero one dash zero zero eight. Do we have a motion? And second. We would now, if that emotion is second, we can hear from Mr. Dudley.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to. Hear the screen again. This is a proposed annexation of property off of West Sump Street and Piscopo Road. It is contiguous to the city limits through another proposed development. It's been through planning permission. It's going to be called Cedar Crest in this area. And that's that kind of. We have a.
I think we do have maps in your packets, so, um, we, we can proceed that way until this catches up with us. Does everyone have a, a, a map in their packet?
No, have you?
Yeah, all right, we can, we can go ahead and proceed, hopefully maybe this will catch up with it. But the um, the property is approximately fifteen acre, uh, the proposed zoning is, um, RG three, which again is, um, six thousand square foot, single-family detached homes is what we believe uh, is going to be proposed there. And the property, uh, currently does not have water and sewer access. However, uh, it is part of the larger Cedar Crest project. And, um, we did have a letter on file, I think it was included in your packet, uh, the developer is acknowledging that. That, um, the feasibility analysis was done on the Cedar Crest, this parcel, as well as a larger area around it. Um, and there, there was an included restation in that as well as, um, some sewer infrastructure, uh, to develop this, this kind of property and vicinity in a whole. So, uh, again, the developer has acknowledged that. Uh, so we will be anticipating in, in the Cedar Crest expansion, and it does include, uh, this. It was previously approved, I think a couple of years ago by city council. And I do have, uh, the, the future land use map does recognize the property as residential suburban. Uh, this development, um, it is in agreement with that, uh, with the RG three zoning. And planning commission did unanimously vote nine to zero, um, to, uh, for the proposed RG three zone. And here are a few photos of the vacant parcel. And this concludes staff.
Thank you, Mr. Duggan. Any further discussions? Questions? If not, we've had a proper motion second. All those in favor, please signify by aye. And if opposed, may. Let it reflect that bill number twenty twenty dash forty-two has passed first reading. Next bill, thoughtful consideration is bill number twenty twenty forty-three for first reading. An ordinance to grant an easement on a portion of the Florence County tax map parcel number zero zero one zero two dash zero one dash one six one to Duke Energy Progress LLC, specifically fifteen feet wide along the northernmost property line, fronting alligator road. It is pro, the motion by Councilman DeBaylor, so we have a second. A second, a second by councilwoman, can I get some more? Mr. Clint?
Thank you, Mayor, move it to council. Uh, this is request, this easement is requested by Duke Energy. This is in regards to the alligator road widening that will start construction, uh, this coming year. Uh, DOT just had letting for that this past Tuesday. And, uh, that construction will begin very soon, should last around three year. Um, so again, this is for Duke to relocate, um, they're not relocating their infrastructure within the easement. It is merely to gain access in case they ever have to do any maintenance or anything along that. This is a property we own that is, uh, the location of one of our, uh, water plants. And it is fifteen feet in depth across the entire road front, which is approximately one hundred and forty feet. This concludes that.
Any discussions? Not ready for the question. Is the proper motion a second? All those in favor, please signify by aye. And opposed the same, may let it reflect that we have passed bill number twenty twenty dash forty-three. Next we have.
Now, we have a five-minute recess, please.
So, can we five-minute reset?
All right. We're about, we're, we're about to go through this, so we need a quick one.
You say it won't be too long.
Maybe some work sessions.
This is, this is longer than normal. The matter group made it longer than normal, the fact that we have power outage. This is not, this will not be your typical length of a meeting. I mean, the, the first hour of the mayor pro temp, that's normally not, so it, it could.
It's not like I have anything else.
I'm getting more in the groove, then it's quicker. Oh, yeah, I know, uh, yeah, if there's something controversial, oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
And see, I didn't eat today. Oh, and so we, we go back to the.
Yeah, or after boards and commissions, we have two items on, examples. The little snack bags are back here.
They are.
We'll be back here soon. Not really, this is not really feeding, this is a little snack bag. They are free, free, because right now, you know, what we normally do is we lay out, we lay out snacks or well, you can't do that right now, because you can't have both hands going in the same. You know, there's a lot of stuff.
I don't know the next time.
We have got to get this show on the road. It won't always be this long. Tell you what.
It's not, I was so busy, I forgot.
I don't think I've ever forgotten. You must have been really, really.
Trying to make sure, well, this is my first nation, so I'm trying to get things being played hours away, so I don't have everything out of the way.
All right, we're back from our second break of this session. We, we're on the downside now, so at this time, we are ready for reports to our council. We have a presentation about audit financial statement for information.
Madam Mayor, members of council, before you have a copy of the comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year ended June thirty, twenty twenty. With us via Zoom, uh, if he's still with us, is Tracy Huggins with the external audit firm of Birch Auction Seal. He's done the audit for many years previously. And I would be remiss if I did not also recognize Gavin Rollinson in my office, financial department manager and controller, who worked very closely with Tracy for the presentation of this report. Inside the front cover, you have two sheets of paper, the first one on the Birch Auction Seal letterhead is the sheet of paper that Tracy will be referring to as he makes his comments. And once he concludes his comments, the second sheet of paper is, um, some concluding remarks I would like to make after he has completed. So with that, if Tracy's still here, I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you, Phil.
I am, do you hear me?
We can hear you, but give us one moment to bring up some higher audio on you.
You gotta mute it over there.
All right, can, we can hear you now, can you, welcome to today's meeting.
Well, thank, thank you for having me. Um, as, as Kevin mentioned, each handout, it, um, full out at all, is a hundred and eighty-four page. The largest two area, just to kind of give you some highlight. You know, I, I did at the bottom of the page, mention a couple of things and I, and I'll reference them at the end, but, you know, just to hit the first one, the general fund, um, it's on page forty-two of the audit. Um, actual, this year was thirty-two million, three twenty-four, six sixty. Um, the budget expenditures, forty-four million, eighty. Says eleven million, seven sixty-one, five hundred, which gives you a zero budget for the general fund. Then, and then if you look at beside that, the actual numbers, the actual revenues were and six thirty-three, nine hundred, um, that million, three oh nine, two forty, greater than budget. Um, the actual expenditures in the general fund were forty-six million, seven thousand, five thirteen. Um, that is one million, nine twenty-one, three fifty-three, greater than budget. The net other financing sources were thirteen million, two six. That's one million, four ninety-two, three forty-six. That leaves an excess of actual of two million, eight hundred and eighty thousand, two thirty-three um, over, over the budgeted, which was a zero budget. Um, few comments right there in the center, just to highlight a fifty-four percent of the general fund revenues come from property tax credits, business licenses, and franchise fees. Your actual unassigned fund balance, general fund, the one for it, which was an increase of five hundred nine, five seven oh five from prior year. And I referenced the page. Wanted to look on page seventy-three to see the entire governmental funds, fund balance analysis. The unassigned fund balance represents forty percent of general fund expenditures and the total general fund balance increased ten point five percent over the prior year. So that's, that's the general fund. And if we move over to the enterprise funds, which is your water and sewer and the stormwater utility funds, the operating revenues for those two funds were thirty-nine, six thirteen, six sixty-four. Operating expenses, twenty-four, two thirty. The net non-operating is seven million, two ninety-three, twenty-three. Your capital contributions for this year were three million, three forty-seven, seven forty-six. And then you transfer to the general fund eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand, leaving a net income in the enterprise funds of two million, thirty-five thousand, seven fifty-seven. So, between the general fund and the enterprise is the majority of the, the audit and the significant portions of it. And then at the bottom, you see the item number three, and that's really just highlights for you to see, um, you know, what would I tell you to look at of all those? Page nineteen, obviously, that's, that's the opinion that we gave, you know, we, we helped the finance department put together this hundred and eighty-four page book, but in essence, what we did was testing policies and procedures and, um, certain transactions to come up with an, your financial statements this past year. Um, the, and also in, to the management's discussion analysis, pages twenty-three to thirty-three. You don't want to read the entire hundred and eighty-four page report. That's the section I would tell anyone, especially a non-financial person to, um, to look through and, and, and highlight. And also, the part three statistical section is, um, very interesting for ten-year trends on the city and economic and financial trends that occurred this, um, over the last ten years. And that's specific testing. Again, there's a letter in the back of the book related to the testing we did. It is also an unmodi, unmodified opinion with, um, no deficiencies listed in it. Any, any questions on that or anything in the audit that you may have?
Any questions? We have no questions at this time.
All right, thank you, Tracy. And I'm sure Tracy, after the meeting, um, I can provide you his contact information for later date. You do come up with a question, we can certainly answer those questions. The second sheet of paper, I'll go over briefly with you. I know with Thomas Chandler's retirement a little over a year ago, with Rick's retirement, and the mayor team, they got to run again. And we were just visited by former mayor Pro Tem, Buddy Grant, and there was concerns about financial position of the city. Let me assure you, we're in very strong financial position. As you just heard from our external auditor, uh, the report you have in front of you is a clean, is a clean opinion, unqualified, unmodified opinion, which is the kind of opinion you want. And the city is in very strong financial position, like I said. If you look at this sheet of paper, I know there was some concern about, okay, with all these changes, we need to have an audit. Guess what? We've got one. Now, the city is required by state law to have an audit of its financial statements performed annually by a CPA. And then also, the federal government requires us to have what is referred to as a single audit. If we expend more than $750,000 in federal funds every year. Of course, with all our various activities funded by the federal government, particularly in the HUD arena. We do that every year on an annual basis, so we will probably have that single audit, which Tracy said in the back of the book. And I do reference that the city, the auditors give the city unqualified opinion. The second paragraph on my sheet, another interesting thing I'd like to point out to you. The chi, the city has chosen for a number of years to perform what is called there at the bottom of the cover, a comprehensive annual financial report. It's much more than just a city's financial statement or a note to those. The city annually submits its CAFR. There's a national organization, Government Finance Offices Association. In order to be considered for the certificate of achievement, of excellence in financial reporting. And if you look at the audit report, page 16 has, has a copy of the certificate on last year's report. We are in the process of submitting this report to receive the certificate again. When we received it last year, that was 22 years in a row that the city received that certificate. So the city has been well-run for the past 22, at least the past 22 years from a financial standpoint. And we've gotten the certificate for all those, all those years. As Tracy somewhat has summarized, the CAFR is broken down into five sections, and you can see those page numbers there. Here to refer to the letter transmittal and the management discussion analysis, first section. The financial section, you can see there on page 35, there's a there's a statement of net position, and a lot of people, I'll go ahead and turn there, because a lot of people, and the the first, it's the very first set of numbers you see in the statement format. And a lot of people refer, look down to the very bottom left-hand corner, the first column, governmental activities. And if you look at that unrestricted net position, it's got that 19 million, 529,000 figures in brackets, they're like, you know, why do we have that big negative number? Well, the main reason there, if you look further up the page, a little bit not quite halfway up the page, there's an amount that says net pension liability of 30 million, 730, 35,000 dollars. That is something the governmental accounting standards board, which is the governing body on how we put these statements together, tells all local governments, you have to disclose your share of the state retirement system liability. And as most of, or all of you are probably aware, our current state retirement system has this huge liability that they're working to try to pay down. We have no control over that liability. It's not like your own mortgage on your house, where you can go to the bank, refinance it, you can pay it quicker. You can pay it off, you can go, we can't do anything with that liability. So if you had taken that liability off our financial statements, we actually have an $11 million positive number at the bottom instead of a $19 million negative figure. So some people get hung up on that figure. And the figure I really like to refer people to is page 38. And this is where I get most of the questions. In my career of almost 25 years being in finance, page 38, the sideways schedule, and it's got, it's the balance sheet for all our major funds. Again, the bottom left-hand corner, it has an unassigned fund balance, and Tracy referred to this earlier, of 18 million, 301,000 dollars in change. That's the city's positive fund balance, it's a very strong fund balance. It's about 40% of the general fund expenditure. And those of you that have been on council, and to the two members of council, city, city of Florence has a policy of trying to have that number be at least 30% of general fund expenditures of the previous year. We're actually 40. Now, we do have some plans for some of that money, and going back to previous administrations, certain projects are going to be funded by those funds. But even with those plans, that number should not drop below 35%, given the current plans. So I wanted to, you know, make that abundantly clear to, to the council. Then I discuss the other three sections, the other financial information section. The statistical section was Tracy referred to, has a lot of really good information, 10-year charts going back, revenues, expenditures, tax collections, what have you. It also has, you know, the largest taxpayers, a lot of the largest water and sewer users in the city. Largest employers, and all interesting sorts of information there. And then the very last section, like Tracy talked about, is the single audit section. With that, especially given the length of the meeting, I'll conclude my comments. And if council should have any questions, I can attempt to answer them now, or, like I said earlier, feel free to contact me later, if you do have any questions.
Council, any questions? Mr. Go, we would like to thank you and our, and your staff, what you've done. And I'll, I would like to reflect what you've said, I've had honor serving on this council for the past 10 years. And one of the things that we have focused upon is making sure that we are financially stable. And I assure you, based on the numbers, we drop paid, we are. And if Buddy was here, he would be smiling, because Kevin said about that, you know, we have, we need 30%, we grab 40%. Buddy would be smiling and turning that chair to tell us how good they were doing. So I do want to reflect, thank you and the staff. And thank you more importantly, that when it comes to an audit, this city has sound fit to be sure that we are audited yearly regardless. So to our citizens, please note, we are taking care of our financial household. Thank you to excellent financial department, thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Ben, appreciate it.
And at this time, we will proceed to our next item on our agenda, which is appointments to boards and commissions. And Mr. Banks is calling me, calling at this time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, as you mentioned, we do have appointments to boards and commissions. And we actually have two vacancies today. Congresswoman Moore has an appointment to our design review board, as well as Madam Mayor. You have an appointment to our construction and maintenance boards of adjustment center fields. We also have an appointment by the mayor to the flats to view. As you know, Madam Mayor, the mayor's appointed to that committee. And a committee has requested that you also appoint a council member to that.
Thank you, Scotty. And at this time, because it's like that we do have two council seats that will be needing to be filled. I will defer those appointments until we, at that time, we have two more council members. We are presently placed to have a flats meeting for the committee. One's by the planning in January, and then our next flats meeting is in February. Yes, and so I plan to attend that while we wait until we have our two council members to look at that appointment. So I would defer that. Thank you.
And we would like to get to the design review board. If it's the pleasure of the council, our councilman Moore has that appointment.
I will appoint Joseph Peely. He's an applicant, his application should be upon your, in your packet. Can we have a motion for Mr. Joseph Peely? Do you have a second? Second? Second. Yes, the proper motion, and second for Mr. Peely to be appointed to the design review board. All those in favor, please signify by eye. And Mr. Peely has been appointed to the design review board.
Finally, we have an appointment to the construction and maintenance board that falls to Madam Mayor. We do have an applicant.
Yes, at this time, we have an applicant, this, I say Lender Joe Lewis, correct? And I would like to nominate in motion that Mr. Lender Joe Lewis be appointed to the construction and maintenance board of adjustment and appeals. Do you have a second?
Second.
The proper motion is second, and Mr. Lewis be appointed to our construction maintenance board of adjustment and appeals. All those in favor, is eye.
Eye.
In a code. Let it reflect that Mr. Lewis has now been appointed to construction and maintenance board of adjustment and appeals. That completes that portion about business. At this time, we do have an item on our agenda for executive session. And at this time, we would like to retire to executive, executive session to discuss the personnel matter in pursuers of code 30-4-7-8-1. We have two.
Yes, ma'am. The, the second item is to provide an update on policy economic development project located within the.
So let it reflect that we also have a second item, which will be an economic development project located in downtown area pursuant to a 30- score that's 785. We have a motion that retire to. So it is, we shall retire to that section. We have just returned from. Alright, here, returning now to my executive sessions, and for the record, it was related to economic development and also to a personnel matter, and there was no action to be taken. So at this time, this concludes our meeting. Is there a motion that we adjourn?
Some, some.